I saw online buy tickets. Totally don't want to. Totally sold out. I had a public event and all in a beer.
Would be interesting.
Yeah. And there's still.
Yeah. And you didn't get to see it.
No, not once. Mike was way at the back, socks all over like scattered.
It was, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, well, they vocalized.
Yeah. They're full of personality. We've done, we've done the raving.
No. No, we did the shindig.
Oh. See, that's the thing, I didn't know that.
Yeah, no, you can't see it.
No. Oh, that's a lovely. I've never seen tree top suckers. Like it was huge.
Are those hair in ponytails?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. He won't cut it, so instead it's up in a pony most days.
That's okay. I just didn't know, I kept zooming in, but I couldn't tell.
No, most days these days he wears a pony. Good summer. Yes.
I missed that of the year as a Mexican. That was Rio canal. Big conversation. That's my outfit. Any excitement this weekend?
So my last, my last thing that I saw leaving the shindig that night was.
Was it us up in the back there?
Oh, no, I knew you were back there for a long. Geez, you went in and you never came back out.
Oh, no, I did.
So, well, I didn't see it. And he's no, it was pulling out the car and then going, turning down Queen Street and there's, I can see your shirt.
Yeah.
What is the boy's name that was with you?
Oh, Van.
Yes.
Was it Van? Yeah.
Yes, because I knew, I knew.
Van's car is still at my house.
Is it? I knew I knew him and it took me a few minutes to figure out he, we had had that meeting over the Beatles E Cup. That's where I met him.
Oh, okay.
Van, remember when we were.
He, um, yeah, I don't know what happened.
Is he nineteen now?
Yeah, he's maybe twenty.
Oh.
But he, um.
I think he might have had the time of his life that day too.
Yeah, I really, this part where it's like, you know, you're very lucky.
Thank you. 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 Um, no more on that other business? No?
Not a word? Yes. Not a word. Although, um. Good afternoon and welcome to our special committee of hold on August 26th and it's been a while. And it's been a beautiful summer. I hope everyone's having a good summer and we're now we're back to work. So we'll get things going. I will call for any amendments to the agenda this evening. Seeing none, I'll mention that we do have regrets tonight from Mayor Pankow. Uh, is there any disclosure of monetary interest arising from the agenda? Seeing none, if something comes up, uh, any member of council, uh, can notify the chair at that time. So, uh, two delegations tonight, I'm looking forward to hearing from Pauline Fitchett. PEP seniors therapeutic center topic today is seniors day program in Smith Falls. So Pauline, if you're here, please, and just press the.
That last name very well.
Uh, yeah, just press the button and, yep.
Okay, is that good?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to everybody for allowing me the opportunity to, uh, to come in and speak with, to all of you about the PEP Senior Therapeutic Center. And, um, sometimes I'll just refer to it as PEP because that's just our loving name for our organization. Um, so I'm the director at the PEP Senior Center and, uh, we are a seniors day program, but, uh, it's not your typical seniors, uh, program where your senior may be active, where they're golfing or, and they can drive and so forth. This is geared towards more of a frail senior, of someone that's a bit older, that has some maybe chronic issues, maybe isn't driving and is feeling isolated at home, but they still are living at home. So that is basically our premise. Now, we've been in Smith Falls for one year. We just had our first year anniversary in July and I have to say a big thank you to the United Way because if we hadn't had the opportunity for funding from the United Way, we wouldn't be able to come to Smith Falls to offer this program. But the exciting thing is we've had one year in Smith Falls and we've gotten some more funding so we can continue another year in Smith Falls and actually open another day. So we're going to be opening on Tuesdays and Thursdays in Smith Falls. So thank you to the United Way for that. We have been operating out of Perth for the last five years. It's been a very successful program there where we're open all week, uh, Monday to Friday. And basically we have about 12 clients per day that, uh, participate in our day program. So how did we come about? Well, uh, Dr. Van Oppen, um, a doctor at the Elliot Street Clinic in Perth and his, um, employee Suzanne Rin tool is a nurse, saw every day people coming in, seniors coming in that, that just were lonely and that, that needed some opportunities to meet other people and be with other like-minded people and just to, um, just brighten their lives a bit. So he, an opportunity came with the Ministry of Health for, to apply for some funding and we did receive it. Now that funding is for three full-time employees, myself included, but we are a nonprofit organization, which, uh, means we do have to fundraise and so forth. Uh, our salaries are paid for, but everything else is, um, you know, fundraising. We have a small fee of $35 a day and that includes your hot lunch. If anyone's ever ate at Two Guys for Lunch, that's who gives us our lunch. So we're really well looked after there. We're at 91 Cornelia Street West, the Cornelia, um, Cornelia Court. So it's a beautiful building that, uh, we're able to be in. Our mandate has mostly been to support our clients physically, emotionally, cognitively and, um, socially. And that's very important to us, all, all of those aspects. It's a therapeutic program because we feel each of those aspects are important. So I'll tell you a little bit about PEP the day at PEP. Uh, our other mandate is to support caregivers because so many of our clients do have their families, they live at home with their families and, um, they have caregivers and it's, we also know it's very important to give those caregivers the opportunity for some respite time and that they can do whatever they need to do, whether that is rest or go out for lunch with a friend so that they can recharge their batteries. So it's sort of twofold what our mandate is. And it's always been to support, um, clients in Perth and Smith Falls. And I just want to also say a big thank you to the Smith Falls community for welcoming us so much this year. It's been a great year and we're, we're, uh, doing great and we've had a lot of businesses and organizations that have supported us, so a big thank you to them. So what would a day at PEP be? Well, it's from nine thirty in the morning till three in the afternoon. Uh, from about nine thirty to 11 is the social time. And again, we realize that that is so important for our clients. So we'll have coffee and muffins, quote of the day, just their friends and family and getting to know what you did all week and so forth. We have an hour of exercise, which is also very important, uh, therapeutic bands and weights, um, and to keep, help them keep active. Uh, we have hot lunch, like I said, brought in from Two Guys for Lunch who spoil us rotten. So it's really good food. And then we have a lot of cognitive activities, uh, in the form of worksheets, group work. Um, just, it's not always important that we get the right answer when we're doing the cognitive sheets, but that we're trying and we're trying to make our brains, um, work our brains a bit. So that's a really quick overview of the day for us. Uh, we have, uh, nine clients right now in Smith Falls and one client just, uh, this week I was in visiting and she said, you know, Pauline, she said, uh, my brother's birthday was last week and they had a big party for him in the afternoon. And I said, oh, did they? And he said, I told him I couldn't go, I had to come to PEP. And she said, I love my brother, but I had to come to PEP. So they look forward to it every day and that's what really, um, we're trying to enrich their, their lives, but they end up enriching our lives as well. So, um, again, I just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody that has supported us, Lannart or United Way and all the businesses in town. I just have a couple of things to ask. I know I was speaking to Nadine. Um, we are a nonprofit organization and I hear you guys have a road toll. So I'm just putting an application in and I'm hoping you might consider us as one of the, uh, organizations to be a recipient of doing that road toll. Secondly, I'd like to invite all of you to stop by our location at 91 Cornelia Court just to say hello and see what we're all about. We're trying to let people know that we're here and we've got funding for another year so we're staying, which is really exciting. And lastly, if you know of someone that you think that, uh, we might be able to support and help, uh, please let them know. And if they'd like to do just a trial day, we can talk about that as well. So, um, I guess that's pretty much my spiel. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Pauline. Any questions, comments from council? Councilor Allen?
No, no questions directly, but just, this is a great service.
Thank you.
You know, many of us have, uh, adult parents that are old aging parents, I should say, that, uh, this, this would be a wonderful asset for them. Do, do the people who participate, do they get picked up?
Right now, we aren't, um, we don't have the opportunity to transportation. Uh, we do in Perth and I have to say thank you to Town and Country Chrysler because they've actually supplied the van for us to, with a minimal charge for pickup. We just haven't been able to do that right now in Smith Falls. It certainly is on our, our radar to do that. And we do have a small contract with Lannart Transportation and, and there was an emergency where someone really wants sort of thing to pick them up, kind of thing, but, uh, not right now, but we certainly, the problem is we could probably get the van. It's the insurance and everything that we still have to pay for that as well. So we're hoping.
Keep up the good work and thank you for what you're doing.
And I really do, uh, hope that you just stop in and say hi and, uh, say hi to the girls and speak to our clients and, uh, thank you so very much.
Thanks, Pauline. I just wanted to tell you that, uh, I wasn't aware of your service, so, uh, um, that's great to hear and, um, part of, I'm part of a service club. So if you want to reach out to me. Uh, we'd love to have you at a meeting at the Rotary Club. And also, uh, I think in the coming weeks, uh, it's great to hear about what's there for seniors. I think we're going to have another delegation from, uh, from the Harmony Club, which is down at our senior center, uh, to talk about what they do. And you might, actually, if you're trolling, trolling for clients, that would be a good place to start as well. So, um, thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Comes up, I love to talk to them.
Thank you. Uh, so that's our first one. And now we have, uh, Gail Logan and Angie is. Angie's not here. Our good friend Gail's here from Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Lannart County. So, good to see you again.
Good to see you as well, uh, members of council. Thank you for having me here this evening. Just wanted to mention that, uh, more than a year has gone by since I joined Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I feel like I blinked and it went by, but it has been a wonderful year. Uh, I wanted to report to you that we served over 750 children in Lannart County in 2018. So our numbers continue to increase every year. I'm here tonight to talk about Paint the Town Purple. September in Canada is Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month. And on Wednesday, September the 18th is Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day in Lannart County. We did a pilot last year in Smith Falls and you participated and we really appreciated that. Uh, the, um, water tower was lit up purple. We had businesses downtown who decorated their windows and their, there were displays and, uh, those displays were judged and, and prizes awarded. So now we're expanding throughout Lannart County and we're talking to each of the communities and asking them to, to help us paint the town purple. Just a little bit about what we're doing in our programming. In 2019, um, we are seeing, um, more interest in our program, particularly from bigs and littles. Always our challenge is volunteers. So part of our recruitment drive takes place during Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month and our Paint the Town Purple event actually last year helped us secure new volunteers, but we had an incredible, um, uh, requests and, and people asking for information and wanting to know about how to become a volunteer. It was very, very successful. So we want to capitalize on that success once again and hopefully, as I said, with other communities as well as Smith Falls, help us to recruit those volunteers. The children in our program, um, we have done studies not only locally, but through our provincial, national and international organizations. And it's indicated that children in our programs graduate from high school at a rate 20% higher than the national average. Also that 78% of the children who came from a social assistance background no longer rely on this form of assistance. And a disproportionately high number of former agency children graduate from college or university compared to others in their age group. So we know this program works. And our mission is to ensure that every child in Lannart County who wants a mentor has a mentor. We do have a waiting list, but again, this is part of our recruitment drive for September and we're hoping to add to that list of mentors. Each volunteer that offers to work with our children through our agency is carefully screened and evaluated for the safety of the children. Safety and security is paramount in our program. Through our back, background checks are conducted along with extensive interviewing and training. Children are also given safety training and go through an interview process involving themselves and their family. And we want to ensure that each match is very successful. So as part of Paint the Town Purple, I have provided a proclamation, hopefully that the mayor will be able to declare that Big Brothers, Big Sisters Month is September and that Wednesday, September the 18th is Big Brothers, Big Sisters Day in Smith Falls. And, uh, hopefully again, we will have the water tower lit up. And again, we've reached out to businesses and others to participate and help us, help us celebrate an important agency and our important work. And finally, I wanted to say thank you to you for your ongoing financial support of our programs. We couldn't do it without you. And in particular, also for our WAC program, Art and his team in the, uh, youth arena. We've been able to run that program. We're continuing to see, uh, additions to the program. We just wound up our summer camps and the numbers were really great. So we're hoping to convert those to, uh, participants who will come to our WAC program throughout the school year. So thank you once again. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Councilor Allen?
No, I just want to say how important your, uh, your organization is to the children of Smith Falls. Um, I was at the magic show that was in the library when that group came and, and you know, they just filled the library. In fact, they overfilled the library. We had to kind of squeeze together for it, but, uh, it's a great program and, and the work you do for children makes a, a huge difference in their life. So I just want to thank you and all the people that work with you. When I was an educator, always I had students that I put into being waiting on a waiting list and those that were lucky enough to get a, a big brother or sister were always better for it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. It truly is inspiring to work with this agency and to see the results. Our traditional program is the big and the little, but we also have an in-school mentor program, which is a lot easier for people to do. It involves one hour a week and, uh, a mentor will go into the school, they'll be matched with a child and they do something fun. They read, they play a game, they do a craft, they just talk. And so while not everybody can give three or four hours a week to be a mentor to a child, it's a lot easier to do an hour. So we're, we're also encouraging people to, to look at the in-school mentoring program. And what often happens is once they've done that, they realize, they get as much out of it, if not more than their, uh, their child does, and then they go on to become big brothers or big sisters.
Thanks, Gail. And, uh, you, you came actually with, with a request as well to, uh, to light, uh, the town purple. Uh, so I'll look to the clerk, should we put that on a cow agenda or I think we've done it before, so. Soon. This evening, we can do that this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Gail. Thank you. Okay, uh, we have no adoptions administered. Do we have any CEO or director's reports this evening?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have, uh, two, starting with Director Dunlop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, uh, three items I'd like to discuss with the committee tonight. The first update, uh, that I wanted to bring forward is that we held, uh, an accessible The first update that I wanted to bring forward is that we held an accessible working group meeting regarding the Beckwith Street project on Thursday, August the 15th. We brought together eight members of the community that had a broad range of perspectives on accessibility to have a discussion about the project. As part of that discussion, we looked at the general legislation governing accessible parking. We looked at our current corridor details and some of the shortfalls. And we also had a very close look at the street, the complete street design as it sits today. A copy of that presentation has been uploaded on the town's website today, so it's available to all. In addition to that meeting, I also met directly with Mr. Hogan at his home on August 22nd because he was not available to meet our meeting, and also went through the materials one-on-one at his residence as well to get that critical insight. All in all, we received a lot of great feedback. Our team has some items to take away, to do adjustments on, and we're working with persons on those aspects this week, so we hope to have some solutions presented at the next council meeting. Second item I have, I'm going to share this on behalf of the manager of water treatment and wastewater treatment. At the last COW meeting, we indicated that we were looking at doing pilots at the water plant, the wastewater plant, to try and mitigate some of the significant chemical costs we were seeing. As the committee may be aware, our chemicals for the coagulant used at both sites has actually jumped 60% in cost this year, so hardly an inflationary adjustment. Jason's been working hard with our staff members on doing pilots. We've done two weeks with the new coagulant at the wastewater plant. We've also done a three-week pilot at the water plant, and we're seeing tremendous opportunities with the new chemical. Now, the new chemical is much more expensive per ton, but where the payback is, we use far, far less in terms of the treatment process. So right now, when you compare those new costs with this new chemical, we're looking at possibility to actually cut our chemical costs in half. So very significant opportunity here. We hope to have something more solid to the committee in the next couple of weeks. So some good news. Garbage tags, I just wanted to report that we've reached out, we have a partnership with your Independent Grocery. They are now selling garbage tags on behalf, not on behalf of the town, but also supplementing what we sell at Town Hall. They also do the same for Rita Lake's Township. That was part of the partnership, was seemed to be a fit. So residents can access, obviously through increased hours, the opportunity to buy more garbage tags. The cost will be the same, it'll be $3 per, and they're available now at the Lotto shop at the front of your Independent Grocery, so a move to serve the residents better. That's it.
Any questions? Councilor Dwyer?
Thank you, Director Dunlop. I just wanted to thank you for having that meeting with some members with accessibility challenges because it sounds like it was a really productive meeting. I got a lot of positive feedback from it, and I look forward to getting the update next week. So thanks for the extra work that went into that.
We heard some great perspectives there that I, in hindsight, I wish we heard a long time ago. It was a very, very fruitful meeting with a lot of aspects for us to consider, and Parsons and staff were working on those this week.
Councilor McKenna?
Director Dunlop, on that potential saving of 50% of the chemical cost is interesting. Is that 50% of the current cost or 50% of that 60% increased cost?
50% of the new increase.
Of the new increase. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on the meeting on accessibility meeting, was there a minute taker for that meeting?
Parsons did take notes on what we heard. We are assembling those, and we are going to be dispensing that to the participants of the meeting shortly with sketches that are being assembled.
Could we include council on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other director's reports? Director Manhire?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few quick updates. The splash pad, as we are heading into September, will remain open as long as the weather cooperates with us. And we're kind of hoping that Thanksgiving is when we start looking at closing that down. The inflatable, however, will be removed as of, right now it's scheduled for September 9th. Some of that will be weather dependent, but I know I'm not going in the water in September, so not that it's there for me. The tender for Town Hall, we're having a final meeting tomorrow with the architects and the project management group. Hopefully, having the tender tomorrow to be reviewed over the next two days. And the tender is due to go out in the paper for next Thursday. And at that point, we will have the full scope of the work captured in that piece. Also, there's a childcare survey that we have put out and has been distributed, it has been out for a bit. We reopened it because we were able to get listing with Tweed employees as one of the part of their newsletter, and the chamber put it out. So we've opened that up until September 6th, and that's related to trying to measure a bit of demand in terms of expansion for space. Anecdotally, right now, we're seeing a tremendous increase because of the school changing hours for start and end times in the schools. We're seeing a tremendous amount of demand for before and after care with that change. So I would encourage everybody who has childcare close to their heart to take a look at that survey and participate if possible.
Thank you. Councilor Dwyer?
Thanks. Director Manhire, do we know what our response rate has been on the childcare survey?
Not right now. We don't, I don't get an update, I can get an update at the end of the survey piece.
But no mid-cycle update?
No.
Okay. It's just I understand that Lanark County did a countywide survey very recently. It would be nice, A, to have them come present the response from that survey here, if at all possible.
Already in the works.
Perfect.
Mr. Chair, the idea would be, once we have that information, my plan is to bring forward to council kind of the options around reopening Thurber Street and what the implications are. And the survey piece will be part of that, and the county will also be part of that.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Allen?
I just have one quick question in regards to our daycare program. Is it accommodating the change? Because I know that there's quite a change in times for the parents that are already participating in our programs.
We've been working with the school board to try to accommodate that. Right now, we're getting the demand for those spaces as parents start to figure out the flow for their children. We've been working closely with the school board to try to accommodate those spaces. So we've got, the good thing is, is that St. Francis now, we have the capacity to increase that space up to 120. So right now, we're at about, last year, we were at about 85. So we do have room.
And we have the staff to be that flexible?
The staffing for childcare is our biggest challenge right now. So we've run two postings over the last month or so, just to try to get enough people to cover those spaces. Should we kind of proceed from there? We'll also have to have a plan in terms of how we approach the staffing requirements. But that's certainly a major consideration in our decision-making.
Councilor Alfred, and then?
Just one comment, because summer's coming to a close, much as we. Just one comment, because summer's coming to a close. On behalf of all of those, and I was not one of them, but I have thoroughly enjoyed watching the use that's been made by the children of Smith Falls of the inflatable. That's just been, it's just fun to watch, and I think they've used it well.
Thank you. CEO Marson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To augment Mr. Manhire's report, I would offer to committee, the survey can be found at speakupsmithfallsalloneword.ca, or there's a link from the town website, smithfalls.ca. And it takes five minutes. It's fairly straightforward, a couple of questions and five or six minutes is all it takes to contribute to your community. Thank you.
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other director's reports? Anything from the CEO? No? Okay. Moving right along, we have three correspondence items this evening. The first is a letter from Jeff York, the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks regarding More Homes, More Choice Act 2019. It's basically an information letter, however, in reviewing it, there is a request for municipalities to review our own conservation authorities' activities. So I would suggest maybe that might be a good idea to put that on a committee of the whole in the future, so we could provide some input to the minister, if that's agreeable to the committee. Another letter from Bobby Joe White, Alzheimer's Society of Lanark Leeds. And this is a request, again, for the ever-popular re-coloring of the town, and this is another good cause. And so that might be a subject for the next committee of the whole, so we can see if we can at all accommodate that good organization. And finally, a letter from the Royal Canadian Air Cadets regarding their Fall Fundraising Tag Day, and we've seen them out on a yearly basis, and that's a terrific organization, and especially the wing in 443 in Smith Falls provides great mentoring for our young people, and often they go on to bigger, better things because of it. So we'll get out and support them on that day that they have their tag day. So that is the correspondence items. We have no in-camera issues, and we'll go on to our priority issues for this evening. Issue A is police radio system tender and pre-budget approval report from Chief McGilvery. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, council. I bring to you a report this evening regarding our current radio system, and looking, this report is on behalf of the board and with support of our police service board for pre-budget approval for the purchase of a new radio system following a tendering process. As I'm sure everyone is well aware, obviously, the radio system is truly one of the most imperative parts of our function, our day-to-day operations, having a reliable radio system and ensuring not only public safety, but certainly our officer safety as well. Last year, we came to council to get an extension, to seek approval for an extension of our current radio maintenance and service agreement. And part of that, the rationale was that, obviously during that time, we would be looking at a new radio system, a little bit of research into what type of system and how the system would be built and what would be best suited for our service and for the municipality. During that time, with the assistance of our IT services and our consultants, which is Bryson and Don McKenzie, we researched and planned for a new radio system, replacing the current one, which is aging. Obviously, our radio dispatch system provides a simple-to-use and fast voice communication between dispatchers and the officers in the field, commonly referred to as a two-way radio or push-to-talk radio system. The system has to be very reliable, obviously, but it also has to have a fast setup time, and that's just sort of that delay from pushing the button to having that communication picked up through the air and then received. It's obviously a critical and essential work tool for the service and obviously for public safety. The equipment that we currently have is almost 20 years old. The part of it we acquired back in 2002, and then the other part, some of the mobile equipment that's in our cars, as well as our portable radios, were acquired in 2010, but they were purchased, if any members of council from then were, it was purchased, used at that time. And although we got a good value, and it was obviously a good price, and it was a very good system, because of its age, obviously, it was limited to the life expectancy. So back in 2010, we purchased that system, implemented it, and it was a hybrid system, a digital and analog system, and provided us good service and good coverage throughout the town. And at that time, with the asset management plan, it was shown to have a life of approximately 10 years, which brings us to 2020. And although the system is still functioning for the day-to-day dispatch operations, we're at the point now where we've, where any significant failure is very problematic. The system's no longer supported by manufacturer and extremely difficult to get parts for the system now, and we've, we have managed to date to get some parts from other police services that have decommissioned similar radio systems. We've been able to use those parts, but we're coming to the end, and as well, our service and maintenance provider is certainly cautioned, they're very limited as to even their ability to get parts. And so obviously, a serious failure could be extremely problematic for us. We have experienced some significant increase in radio malfunctions with dropped transmissions and other issues that we certainly feel make this a priority. And as well, the service agreement that we're currently, that we currently have comes to an end at the end of November. And obviously, any extension beyond that or any further radio agreement would be extremely expensive, and mostly because we're not going to find a service provider that's going to be able to support that radio system because they can't get parts. So obviously, anything that they would do would be at a very high cost. Certainly, buying a new radio system would provide some warranty, and certainly within the, with the first three to five years, the service and maintenance contracts for that new system would be substantially less, and so there would be some cost savings We've consulted some other police services of similar size around the province to look at their dispatch systems, how they chose their systems, and what's worked for them or hasn't worked for them. And based on that, I think we've come up with a pretty good, what I would say is a very reasonable, and if I can use, it's not necessarily the Cadillac of the radio system, but more the Chevy, Oldsmobile of it. I'm not picking any brand out of preference. So it's, the new system will certainly be, and it'll also be, what we're looking at would allow for some potential interoperability with, in the future, certainly to link in with our fire service as well as public works. And we've had discussions with both those services with regards to the system that we've built would be compatible for any future expansion with the fire services as well as public works. And I think in having the infrastructure, the towers and so forth set in place, it would certainly make it somewhat cheaper for those other services to be able to jump onto that as well. The radio system that we're looking at would, obviously, is a newer technology, two-way radio system, provides all the current benefits with obviously some more technology enhancements with a newer digital radio platform. A lot of this is saying that a lot of the new radio is sort of less in hardware and more in software. And so to some extent, that keeps some of the costs, obviously for the hardware portion, down substantially. It's also with that, again, with the service and maintenance, a lot more of that then becomes, moves over to our IT services for working on and troubleshooting, and not so much with an outside service provider. Having said that, we'd still require a service contract with an outside provider, and that's mostly for the hardware, some of our tower equipment, and so on. The, obviously, the tender that we'll be, we would be looking to put out will provide a scope of all the main system requirements, our dispatch stations, consoles, mobile radios for the vehicles, portable radios for the officers, network servers, and also... for the vehicles, portable radios for the officers, network servers, and also with our backup, backup systems in the case of console failure. Our IT has done some research and obviously costs through open sourcing and some assistance with our current service provider with regards to pricing of the various components and software and building that platform. With, and some items come through the states to Canada. And so with some conversion costs, obviously, costs of installation and as well as some contingencies, we've, we've come up with a, with a figure of, an estimate of about $150,000 would be the, would be the cost for a new radio system. So based on that, and obviously, as I said, the nature of the priority and public safety, I would ask council if they would provide the resolution to allow us to go into a tendering process. We'll obviously look at any tenders and bids that come in, evaluate them, and pick the best option. And then we'd be looking for some pre-budget approvals. The idea would be to hopefully have a radio in place so that we're not without a service contract and our current service provider, I believe, would be able to assist us for a month or two. But certainly by January, by the end of January would be the target to have a new radio in place and operational. Subject, any questions? That's my, that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. I'll take questions from Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I feel like this is not one of those pieces that you want to compromise on. Communication in your line of work is pretty much the most pivotal piece of equipment you can have. And it sounds like you have been making do for far too long. So my understanding, although I can't find the reference in the report now, but my understanding was that this was part of asset management planning and it was forecasted to happen in 2020 anyways, so that money should be set aside for that. So on that note, I have absolutely no concerns with granting pre-budget approval and your second recommendation to proceed through the procurement process now.
Thank you.
Counselor McKenna?
Thanks, Chief. I'm also supportive of the request. I had a couple of questions. That you use the term and maybe considerably reduce costs with the new system. Can you give a ballpark of a percentage or is it like a?
For the reduction, for the service maintenance? I really couldn't, other than, I mean, and I'm just going, obviously, when it opens up to tenders, other companies would bid and other companies would bid on servicing and maintenance. So it's really hard to gauge from what I, from what I get from our current service provider. Obviously, the consensus is that what we have now is an old unsupported radio system. So the costs, any type of cost requires a lot more labor, very difficult to get parts. So there's more time spent even trying to find piecemeal parts. And then even trying to troubleshoot any problems that are going on take a considerable amount of time. And we've experienced that recently. So all I can say is that a new system being under warranty and obviously, you know, it's like a vehicle, really, you're probably not going to use as much, be in the shop getting service when it's new and still under warranty. So I would, although I can't give a figure, I'd be very comfortable in saying it would be a significant savings in that regard.
And the second question is, this is my ignorance on your line of work, is are the calls either, all of the conversations that take place on the radio, are they recorded or, and will the new system have that capacity as well?
They are recorded. Now, that's, and that's a separate piece and it's called, it's called a logger is what that component is called. And it's what records all of our incoming and outgoing telephone calls as well as captures all of the radio transmissions. It's all timestamped, obviously. And it's, and it's all, we can download it, save it, play it back, et cetera. The new system will, it's not part, it's, we're going to keep the logger component. It's a fairly expensive piece of equipment. It can still be used. It's more tied in with the phone system than it is so much with the radio system. It's sort of an added benefit that it also records radio. So it's more tied in with the phone system. Over the next couple of years, I'm sure council has heard with next generation 911, text 911 and that photo 911 and that sort of thing, there are going to be changes to phone systems which would come along with logger and everything else. And that's slated before 2023. So there'll be some changes to phone systems, but that'll be a sort of a separate component to the radio.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions? I think we've got support for you, Chief. It's to do with officer safety too, of course. But in 2010, that was the first, and I don't know if Counselor Allen remembers that, but that was one of the first motions we did as new councillors, was the, was the used system. Chief already came and, so I remember it well.
Good.
Believe it or not. Anyway, thanks for coming and we'll follow that up with the resolution September 3rd. Get that done for you.
Thank you.
Okay. B, Authorization of Funding Agreement with MTO Connecting Links Program. Cao Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the recommendation in front of you this evening is to enter the agreement with the Ministry of Transportation for the Connecting Link funding. So just by way of background, July 15th, the announcement was made. The town of Smith Falls will, if this agreement is signed, receive $2.1 million. It's important to note that the total amount of the project budget that's eligible for Connecting Link is $2,333,800. Ninety percent of that is 2.1 million. So we got the full amount that we requested this time around. And I would note, the last time we applied in the 2018-2019 program, the amount was 1.57 million. So this is a considerable increase over the last one, which, which of course was not approved. The other point I'd like to make is that the expenses are only eligible if they're spent after July 15th. So the schedule that we now have for this project fits in nicely with the funding criteria within the Connecting Link program. So I think the recommendation is self-evident and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Counselor Dwyer?
Thanks. Cao Morris, what happens if we execute the agreement for funding but don't move forward with the project or don't spend our entire allotment of funds?
Well, through the chair, the, if we don't move forward with the project, it would, the money would remain unspent and presumably the ministry would reallocate it in subsequent rounds of funding.
Okay. Does it, does it impact our chances of receiving funds in the future if we have received funds and not actually spent them?
Absolutely.
We know that unequivocally?
I don't think there's, it's not part of the criteria in the funding programs, but I think, I think what the ministry, from our conversations, are looking for are projects that are going to move forward and advance the purpose of the program. And that is to, is to improve 77 Connecting Links in Ontario. So, so again, there's no criteria that says you'd be blacklisted if you didn't, but I think it would be hard to make a case if you applied and didn't spend it.
Okay. Is there a monetary penalty to the municipality if they accept the funds and don't spend them?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Alfred?
No other questions, but I, I can't imagine this committee or any council turning down 2.1 million dollars. I think this is good news that we, that we've been successful in getting this and, and thanks to some of our staff that put in a lot of work to make this so. Those would be, that's my only comment this time.
Yes. Well, the thing is, it's, the timeline is the end of 2020. Am I correct? End of 2020?
Yeah, so the program, we have to submit all expenses by March 21st, 2021.
2021. So, okay. That's lots of time. And I guess we'll, this ties into the next discussion and, and we'll talk about that in a minute. I guess if there's any other question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just the, again, the money is available. I'm anxious with our water and sewer 100-year-old system we've got under the ground. I'm certainly anxious to move as quickly as possible and to take advantage of this to start to upgrade our infrastructure in this community. So very keen to see this go forward.
That being said, this is Connecting Links funding. It's not, it's not the underneath, which is going to be a subject coming up in a minute. So, you know, 2.1 million dollars is nothing I'm not, I'm never going to vote against. But the next matter is another matter. So I guess that'll come forward tonight and we'll, we'll get that done. C is non-binding discussions. Ottawa Green Belt Construction Report. Director Dunlop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a, going back to May 21st, that was when council authorized staff to enter into non-binding discussions with Ottawa Green Belt Construction Company Limited. That direction followed, of course, a tender bid in April that did not yield an acceptable price. And hence, we have been in discussions with Ottawa Green Belt over the majority of the summer. So we've looked at the project collaboratively. We looked at cost savings through kind of three different silos, value engineering and what value engineering is, is if you look at modifications to the design that might yield savings in efficiencies or constructibility. Negotiated unit pricing, so actually speaking and knocking down unit prices as bid. And of course, scope change is also in that, among the opportunities that you can impose savings on the project. So through those discussions, we've identified at present opportunities for savings of 1.36 million plus HST. Within the report, you're going to see Attachment A that provides an itemized list of the areas where savings were affected through the negotiated changes. At the conclusion of where we are with the discussions, Ottawa Green Belt has expressed that they are flexible on the schedule for this project to meet the town's needs. They have, however, expressed an interest in a fall mobilization as a possibility. They've also expressed interest that they would mobilize early in 2020 as well, March being mentioned as the target month. Ottawa Green Belt has also advised that all of the unit pricing that has been discussed in non-binding discussions to date would be held free of inflationary adjustment through to the end of 2020. Staff have taken also a bit of time to reflect on where we're at and the position we're in this summer. We've made a lot of phone calls out to the construction industry to completely understand our situation. Through those conversations with local contractors in the, in particular Ottawa Valley, we're hearing that pipe contractors are essentially in short supply, part of which we believe had an effect on the interest and pricing of the bid we received. We also reached out to neighboring municipalities and Carleton Place seems to be having similar challenges in their municipality. Their two major projects that they had put out to market this year come in at 45% and 100% respectively over their budget estimates. So they got a bit of a shock as well on their projects. One of their projects is an example, they are proceeding at a price of 1.8 million and they estimated that job at 1.2. So clearly some industry pressures there. So we believe that in light of the current market conditions, that the 2019 budget may not have fully forecasted what happened with the market and hence, our budget numbers may have been low. We've put together a series of options for council to consider in the report this evening. There's four of them. Option one, of course, would be to alter the bid by returning any of the items that are identified in Attachment A. Option two would be exploring further cuts or negotiations. My only caution in that is, I believe personally, that we've exhausted all of the savings opportunities without getting into the thick of what I would call the static items in the project. We have a very high standard for our streetlights that we've selected. And as an example, we've got black traffic hardware, which I think adds a lot of appeal, many other elements like that, that I really think it would be a disservice to start to erode away at those features in terms of cost savings. Option three, of course, is just terminate discussions where we're at. That would be on the premise that we just simply aren't satisfied with the outcomes. Council has that option. And the fourth option, of course, would be to advance discussion for award. So right now, that is our recommendation for council this evening. A couple of things to consider with where we're at today. Obviously, we've, we've found 1.36 million in adjustment. We have a qualified contractor on the job potentially. We have an open construction schedule which affords some flexibilities to council to consider. Known pricing through the end of 2020. And we, we've identified that we have grant eligibility. And as Cao Morris identified, the Connecting Links funding that we just received was actually over 500,000 more than our previous request that was denied. So some good news there. The budget has been provided in the report. You'll see in Table 1 specifically an outline of all of the grants that were assigned to the project in the 2019 budget process. And you'll see a tabulated number there. In the second table, you'll see a refined breakout of the total project with the Connecting Links funding introduced. At present, we have a project that is 65.6% funded by grants, and that's both federal and provincial. We have a shortfall of 464,000 if the project was expedited in 2019, which is technically not possible. That overage could be considered and adjusted as part of the deliberations for the 2020 Some deadlines for council to, or committee to consider in looking at the report this evening. Our OCIF top-up grant for 2017, the reporting of our award of contract elapsed on June 28th, so we are in default of that milestone. The works to be completed under that grant are to be done December 31st, 2019. And of course, I'm speaking to the sewer separation, so the new sanitary sewers and the drainage. On August 20th, a ministerial delegation at AMO happened. There was dialogue about next steps and opportunities to extend this deadline and perhaps enable the town to access the full amount of the OCIF grant. So we've been informed of opportunities to engage discussions to hopefully safeguard that grant. When it comes to the Connecting Link, the first contract award under that reporting is September 30th, 2019. Now, I'd like to clarify for the committee, that does not necessarily mean a construction contract. It could be an engineering contract. But a contract needs to be engaged and reported by the end of September nonetheless. The deadline to complete the work under our grant is generally, it's before December 31st of next year. But all of our payments must be, all of our requisitions for payments under Connecting Links has to be in, submitted and approved as mentioned by, for March 31st, 2021. The recommendation that is before the committee tonight follows council's strategic objective 3.7, specifically complete Bequa Street redevelopment, phase one of which is targeted for to be complete by Q4 or the fourth quarter of 2020. I would also like to add for the committee tonight, the Green Belt has extended the validity of their bid bond in addition validity of their bid bond in additional 60 days in light of the continuance of discussions. That takes their bid bond through to October the 8th until they receive a decision on the proposal. So, that's the report update for this evening.
Do you have questions from committee? Comments, questions?
Thanks to Director Dunlop for finding some path forward with Green Belt and being able to reduce costs on this project by more than 1.3 million. It's still more than we had originally anticipated, but where we were when we turned down the tender, we're in a much better position than we were at that point in time. We've all been aware for some time regarding the shortage of skilled labor for the trades that we need for this particular project. And the commitment by Green Belt to hold the pricing into 2020 is also critically important. Director Dunlop knows micro details of the scope of the work and the negotiations that he's carried out with Green Belt to decrease the costs and yet still maintain the design It's also, as you say in your report, critically important to have a qualified contractor with an open construction schedule. So, along with several other things, I also believe if we are able to at least get this started on the first block of Beckwood this fall, that shortens the construction schedule for next summer. So, in terms of downtown business, we, the scenario would be that we'd be finished, say, October, November and staying away from the Christmas, the height of the Christmas season and then starting again in the fall or in the early spring with the potential to be done before the high summer season. So, this may have, not purely by accident, not by design, turn out to be a more, to be more advantageous to the downtown business people as well. This has been a really long and winding road, but without reservation, I am supportive of staff's recommendation.
Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Counselor Brennan and Director Dunlop. I'm not going to lie, when the, when we only got one tender in, I was really leaning towards, you know, we need to, we need to go back to the tender process and get more bids and come back. And what you've managed to do here has really exceeded my expectations. 1.3 million in reductions, all of them without affecting the quality of the end product. On an 8.27 million dollar project, we have 5.4 million in grants, so 65.6% of this project's covered. And because, and in a big part of the last council's fiscal responsibility, we would only have to take on, by my calculation, 711,720 dollars of debt to go ahead on, less than 10% on the 8.27 million of the total cost. So, the numbers, I think, are very, very strong. I'm very happy with what's come back to us. I want to acknowledge that if this project, you know, if you're one of the people outside or you're watching this on the live stream or you're in the, in the audience and you're unhappy with the decisions that were made on January 21st, it's going to be a difficult thing to see this project move forward and it's, it's something I think we have to acknowledge. But this report's excellent and I support, I support moving forward with the recommendation.
Counselor Allen.
I'll be brief. Thank you so much for your report. It's easy to read and it's exemplary. I came back from vacation and filled myself in on all the things that have been happening and I agree with my colleagues. It is easy for me to accept your recommendation and I look forward to moving forward. I especially appreciate the work you did with the accessibility group. I mean, from the very beginning, one of the reasons I was for this last term of office was that that's important to me, having been in a wheelchair for a number of weeks over that course of my ankle being broken. I know that that's an important thing and as I grow old and my citizens of our town grow old, we need to be able to walk downtown in our wheelchair or in our walker or whatever. I think, excellent work. Thank you very much, Troy.
Counselor McCann.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The 66% is of federal, provincial funding is quite common in large infrastructure projects where the feds and the province put in 66 and the local government or local operator provides the other 33%. So, this is, to get it into that realm is more the norm than, than any other way. I think of the years that councils have wanted to revitalize the downtown and the necessity of the water and sewer and to reach this point now, with the resources that we, that staff and previous councils and this council have lined up to move this project forward, I can't think of any reason not to provide it with my wholehearted support and want to see this get moving as soon as possible this fall for the benefit of the environment and the infrastructure under the ground, but also for the environment and the future generations that will use this, revitalize downtown, the complete street that we're really supporting. So, I'm ready to move forward with my colleagues and with the staff and I appreciate the work you've done.
Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Troy, like my fellow counselors, I want to give you huge, huge kudos for not only the reduction of 1.3 million that you've been able to negotiate in this tendering, but also for the hours and hours of work that you've put into this file. I know that it has been all time-consuming and I'm sure you were very much looking forward to awarding the tender and moving on. A 60, 65, 66% leverage rate on government funding is also a huge accomplishment and I think we owe that to you in a lot of ways. You have been such a leader on this file and you have helped us navigate what has been a very, very complex file to understand and appreciate the level of complexity that it brings. With that said though, I still believe that the project itself has been flawed from its initial commissioning of design work with Parsons in particular and with a particularly noted lack of attention to detail and review since the initial decision to reverse the original decision of council was undertaken. This is evident through the recent revisions on the design resulting from input from the accessibility committee as late as last week, as well as Mr. Campbell respecting revisions to traffic and pedestrian crossings within the downtown. This design, I believe, is far from perfect and I don't believe that the product has been presented to represent the goals and wishes of our community, as I don't feel that they represent mine. It has nothing to do with the accessibility on the street. It does not deal with getting people into buildings. It's one thing to create accessible parking, but if they can't actually use our stores, to me, that's a major oversight and I was really hoping that this design in its final form would deal with that and it doesn't. It also does not, in my views, create any amount of sidewalk conducive to creating places for people to be. Instead, it has reduced what could be a very, very generous street boulevard for pedestrian activity through sidewalk cafes and gathering places to people to accommodate a bike lane. And while I don't, I don't necessarily agree that the bike lane will be of ultimate use within the downtown, I would be happy to be proven wrong in the future. But if that is not the case, the design also doesn't allow for any flexibility to reuse that space with a total redesign of the downtown core. And with that regard, I think we could have done better. We only do get one shot to redesign our downtown and I can't say that I'm totally satisfied with the design that has come forward. This is absolutely not the way that I would have liked to see the process roll out and I feel that we have been playing catch-up with ourselves on this file since the day we took over its care and I think we have to own that. But I for one, am not supportive of endorsing this tender despite Troy's valiant efforts to bring this to a conclusion and I don't want to understate that, Troy. I have such respect for you and I know that you've been put through the wringer on this and I think everybody in the community, regardless of what side of the fence they stand on on this, has nothing but respect for the conduct you have had on this file and I want that noted. But for all the other reasons that I stated, I will not be supporting this file.
Thank you. I'm last. Yep, basically what Counselor Dwyer said, but I've said it all before and, but I wanted to make the point that you just made, Counselor Dwyer, about our director of public works because I'm in the community and I'm on a daily basis involved in service clubs and in the stores and everyone that I know hates the design, but has the utmost respect for Troy Dunlop. So, you did a great job in basically getting a third, a third, a third, which is, which is the formula that I've known for 25 years for upper-tier support and you got there. The only problem I have with it, it's a design that no one likes. And, you know, just to be consistent, I won't be supporting it. It's not because of the work you did though. So, thanks for that. And I'll add that this will come forward, unless anyone else has a comment? No? This will come forward next week for, in a motion, I believe, or bylaw? Either one.
I believe it's bylaw.
A bylaw. So, from the sounds of it, it's going to pass. So, thanks for your work and we'll move on from there. Pope, see you, Almors.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there are two elements to this recommendation and they build on each other. One is to accept the changes that we've been able to negotiate. And then the next is to accept the changes formally with Ottawa Green Belt. So, that's what council will consider next week.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
So, the other aspect of this is the start date. So, we've heard a few comments. I'd just like to get some consensus on what members of committee believe is the appropriate start date because that's going to influence the direction we provide to Ottawa Green Belt.
Okay, I'll listen to comments. Counselor Alfred.
Certainly, we have $933,000 that either has to be, part of it be spent and then carried over into 2020 to finish the work. So, if we can get as much of that money spent in 2019, that betters our chances of having the province say you can carry forward the balance into 2020. I think that positions us in a better way. I also think that the more we can get done this year, the better we will be positioned for come spring to finish the project. So, that's, that's my thinking, that the sooner we start, the sooner we get a shovel in the ground, the better off the whole project will be.
Okay. Yes.
I agree.
Okay. No, I need to answer. I would ask, I know you met with Minister Hardeman last week and I know there's a path forward perhaps and my sense is it's probably a good chance that an extension on the use of that money would be possible. I can't see it not happening. So, that would be six months. So, would that, would that provide an opportunity to do it all in one construction season?
So, that's a good question. There's a tremendous amount of below-surface work to be done before we even put pipes in the ground and the funding is based on the water and sewer, sewer separation and new water services, including connections. So, six months would not likely be enough if we were to, if we did not start this fall. I mean, I think we have agreement to push the limits on winter construction, but there are limitations to that for sure, but certainly starting and getting some of the heavy lifting done this fall would position us much better to fit within the six-month extension we're asking for.
Counselor McCann.
Yes, and I think starting this fall also puts the message out to the funders that we're serious about going forward and we're ready. Director Dunlop has lined up the right contractor. We've got the right conditions and as Counselor Alfred pointed out earlier, maybe we'd have less impact on the Christmas and then into next year's busy tourism season. I'd like to get going.
Okay. Counselor Dwyer.
Thank you. The only, the only concern I have is that it sounds like what's going to happen is that we're going to dig up the street, particularly around the Chambers Street intersection. Is that correct, Troy?
Through the chair, my understanding is that the work, if any, performed this fall would be mainline sewer, mainline waterworks and all of which would be largely oriented in the east half of the road, but only in the lower block.
Okay.
It is amongst the most complex and largest pipe work on the job.
So, in doing so, they will excavate the site and then backfill and then we will leave the backfill, I'm hoping with a first lift of asphalt for the winter season so that we're not just driving through gravel for potentially six months?
Through the chair, yeah, there is a component, there always was a component of throwaway asphalt. I use the term loosely. Whenever you're maintaining traffic conditions on an arterial road, you do have to do a certain amount of asphalt reinstatements to keep traffic dust down, keep the mud out from becoming an issue. So, there would have to be some paving on the, again, largely focused on the east half of the road.
Okay. I think I'd be okay with that, knowing that we're going to have some amount of, I don't know, normalcy over the winter. So, as far as the start date goes, despite not being supportive of this project, I don't really think it makes a difference one way or the other.
Counselor Dwyer.
Thanks, Counselor Brennan. I just wanted to elaborate on the six-month extension. Because there's only a six-month extension associated with the 900,000-plus OCIF grant, a vote no with going forward with Director Dunlop's recommendations is a vote no on that $900,000. So, that, to lose that money would take the project from the 66%, the third, 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 and drop it down to a 53%. So, as much as personally, as an individual counselor, I can look back on our first term and there's communications aspects that I failed at, there's things that I would do differently the next time we move forward and I'm sorry for that. We can't undercut how much money's on the line here and for a small town, I don't think a million dollars is something to buck at. So, I just wanted to reiterate those timelines and clarify that side of my position.
Thanks for that. The other piece of this, and a vote no is not a vote against getting the money. In fact, we've already entered into that agreement and I think that was a unanimous vote. So, the other aspect, I think committee should, and thanks for pointing this out, are there's two elements in the, in the changes that Troy made that are visual. So, one is intangible, one is the crossing at William Street, pedestrian crossing at William Street, and the other is interlocked brick across to the two raised intersections, am I right? So, I always thought, when I, you know, when I was speaking to people, that there was enough commonalities between the two designs, option one and option two, and one of the commonalities was the two pedestrian crosswalks. And I've been around for eight years and I've heard for eight years about the trouble getting across at the Royal Bank. So, I'm a little uncomfortable with that coming out. I know the dollar of value is in the $20,000 range, somewhere around there. Yes, Troy.
Can't discuss specifics.
You can't say. Okay.
What I can say is if, if council wanted to leave it in, we would go back to Ottawa Green Belt and negotiate. Belt and negotiate that.
Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you, Counselor Brennan. I just, from general experience, pedestrian crosswalks, like if you look, person installed a couple, when you look at the costs associated with those projects they went through over the last couple of years, there's not big costs associated with the pedestrian crosswalk. The big downside of the pedestrian crosswalk right now is that the technology doesn't exist to sync it up with the lights. So we can have all the lights synced up, working, moving traffic efficiently, but that pedestrian crosswalk would come in, and this is something Mr. Campbell brought up, you press it and then it kind of puts everything else out of sync. I think the way technology's moving, I don't, you know, I would be surprised if it doesn't happen in the near future that we can get a pedestrian crosswalk there that syncs with everything else, but for the time being, I think it's prudent to wait and tackle that problem separately.
Troy?
Through the chair, if I could elaborate, a positive or option that you have in the future is the geometry will be there, that you could reintroduce it. The pedestrian or PXO feature that we had included in the design was essentially solar-powered, so we don't have to worry about wiring. It would just come down to installing it at the location at a future date. Again, a lot of it comes to the takeaways of us hearing about the, I mean, this project has been a balancing act, you know, try to meet the needs of commercial traffic flow, parking yield, accessible parking, many, many other features. Whenever you touch one of those, it impacts another. It's been a very delicate balancing act. When it comes to the PXO, the reality is, again, as Counselor Dwyer identified, it is an on-demand device. The positives of a PXO compared to a traffic signal is it's really quick, and it's only one second per meter assigned across the street, so it's actually a shorter burst. But again, for those that see a significant investment in three sets of traffic signals, all in green phase, and they're parked watching someone come across, the perception will be perhaps that the design is flawed. And that's something that we've, again, through some of the feedback, have reconsidered very carefully.
And just to be clear, MTO did approve that particular?
MTO accepted it, the location is, in particular, that one is not textbook, but MTO did approve.
No, I just, I just wanted to put it out there so people are aware, that, you know, these are some of the changes. I know there was value engineering done and that sort of thing for things that I don't understand, but the things that you can see and touch, those are two things that are going to be different, so just put it out there. Counselor McKenna?
Not to belabor it, but I think you've raised a good point, and I think the importance of our next agenda is communications around this project, how we roll it out, what it means, what, just to manage expectations about what is in and what isn't in, because just listening to us tonight, you won't get the full scope. So I think our next discussion, it will be critical, not just for the next year or two years.
Okay. Thanks, Troy. We'll be doing this September 3rd. So I get to introduce our newest staff member, Lauren Sinclair. I met her last week, and I want to welcome you to our staff as our communications specialist, and you've jumped into the fire, and hope you can put it out. So the subject is communications rollout, Beckwith Street revitalization project. It's all yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. So as mentioned, the report I'm presenting today provides information on how the town intends to communicate developments on the Beckwith Street revitalization product, project to residents, stakeholders, and businesses. I should note that the items that are identified in the rollout are, of course, contingent upon the approval of the project, but the ultimate goal is around transparency, building awareness, and building understanding about the project and the next steps of the project. So some of the items that are identified in here are already underway. We recently launched a Beckwith Street revitalization webpage. We also proactively issued a news release the morning after we learned that we had been in receipt of the Connecting Links funding from the province, and we've also taken steps to use social media to reach the large following that we do have, particularly on Facebook. So some of the other communications pieces outlined in the plan that we have identified going forward would be to continue preparing news releases and web postings to mark major milestones in the project. So that would be, for example, the signing of a contract or the start of construction. We would ensure that there was sustained social media presence with updates and information by creating a fulsome communication strategy that details the opportunities we have to communicate developments and steps in the project. We have identified in here a public engagement process that includes a meet-the-contractor night with downtown businesses to make sure that they are aware and informed of the impacts on their businesses, as well as one with residents, where they can ask questions and become more informed and aware of the developments and next steps. We would also ensure that we continue to keep the newly-developed Beckwith Street revitalization webpage evergreen as things change, and adding relevant photos so that people can really have a visual and a sense of what this is going to look like in the end. I think that's a really important component of it, so that people can see themselves and visualize what this is going to, this is going to look like. We would also ensure that we are keeping the frequently asked questions portion of the website up to date, that can answer any questions about road closures, access to businesses, and timelines, for example. We would also recommend a media technical briefing on the project to ensure that our reporters in town have all the information that they would need to be able to help us communicate to the public, the developments on the project. If you have any specific questions, I would be happy to answer them or get back to you.
Thanks, Lauren. Questions, comments from council? Counselor Alfred?
Just a comment that, as, and I know you will keep in touch with the DVA, through me or through the chair, so that we can support the efforts of this.
Absolutely.
That'll be important to that group. Thank you.
Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you, Counselor Brennan. Welcome. It's, it's cool to have a communications dedicated person now. I wondered if you had a chance to review the report from Lakeview Communications yet that we had done?
I have, yeah. So that was presented on July 15th, and this rollout strategy is based on the recommendations that were made by Lakeview.
Excellent. And what aspects of this rollout do you see will be the most important for engaging the people that are outside right now, for the people that are feeling really left out, that their, their town is changing in a way that they're not comfortable with?
Yeah, I think making sure that, you know, we have a two-way line of communication going, so we're pushing out information, but we're also hearing from people, and I think that that can be done both through Speak Up Smith Falls. So that's on the rollout strategy as well, to create a project page on Speak Up Smith Falls, which is a great tool for engagement, as well as the meet-the-contractor night, so that people have an opportunity to ask questions and have them answered right there and then. But I think, you know, as we're hearing questions and comments from the public, those will not just be kept in a vacuum. I think we'll take those, and we'll update the frequently asked questions, we'll update the website, we will incorporate them into the social media strategy, so that we're constantly communicating out the information that we're hearing and the questions that we're getting.
Excellent. And outside of the meet-the-contractor night, will there be any other opportunities for public meetings, or?
At this point, we've only looked six months out, so for the next six months, those are the opportunities that have been identified, but I think it's open to considering should there be a need.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Counselor Dwyer?
Thank you. Hi.
Hello. Welcome to our team. Thank you.
We are so glad you were here, because we are so badly in need of your services. I read your report with great detail and was pleasantly surprised by its content, which is great. I'm really excited to see how the communication rollout goes. Is it, in your mind, something that should be treated as a living document and that we will be flexible to?
Absolutely. I think communications strategies and rollouts are always living documents. I used the word evergreen earlier, that's kind of a, you know, that's, we are always, it's always a living document, so I think there's opportunities to adjust and incorporate and reflect and continue to communicate out information as there are developments in the project.
Okay. So with that in mind, as we start to move through your timeline, are you anticipating that you will be coming back to council with updates on how things are going, or what we're going to be modifying in response to comments we've received?
If you would like additional information, we can certainly provide more regular updates.
Okay.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Other comments? No? Welcome, Lauren. I was, I like your plan. I would like, however, to see some more immediate public engagement, especially after next week, i.e. a town hall or a, we had discussed before, we discussed with Lakeview, and I think that's an important thing to do going forward, but I think that the more we communicate with people and allow them to communicate with us, the better, and I think that might be one vehicle would be helpful with the people that I talk to that are not happy. So other than that, welcome to the team, and I look forward to talking to you soon.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Clerk Costello has relocation of September 3rd meeting of council.
Thank you. This is a very short item. Looking for council's approval to pass a bylaw this evening to hold the September 3rd meeting or meetings, if we should happen to have a special committee, the whole, at the arena. There's a presentation by person scheduled regarding accessibility, and we would like the location to be accessible to all those who wish to attend.
Counselor Allen?
It's a great idea. Look forward to that.
Nodding heads. I'm wondering if we could work with Code Jacota to stream it? I think that'd be of great interest.
Yep, definitely try our best.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. July budget monitoring report. Treasurer Cosiel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here this evening to provide counsel with a high-level update after completing July's budget monitoring. I did do one for June, which staff were presented with, it just didn't provide an opportunity with the summer schedule for committee. So for the end of July, I am currently projecting a surplus of approximately $123,000. The water and the wastewater are in a deficit position. Waste, our water problem is about $78,000, and wastewater is about $56,000. Tax support surplus is approximately $255,000. I would like to note to council that budget monitoring is not an exact science, because of this I tend to err on the side of caution when projecting surpluses. That being said, there are many benefits to the budget monitoring process, such as allows for early identification of deficits, so that staff can work on cost savings to offset any negative financial implications, maintains the integrity of our financial system and reporting, and helps to manage post-budget events such as out-of-budget expenditures. So July's forecast surplus is subject to change, as you know, in the months to come, particularly at year-end when all actuals have been finalized. And attached to my report, there was a detailed summary variance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Janet. Any questions? No, and this is excellent work, as usual, and the idea of you coming regularly to give this information to us is very helpful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Word of tender, articulated front-end loader, Troy Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of tonight's report, number 2019-108, is to award the tender for replacement of the articulated loader, which is part of the approved 2019 budget. We released tenders for new equipment in, on July 18th, the summer, and our tenders that we did put out, we called for either a 2019 or 2020 model articulated loader with, we also, sorry, we also had a third option in there to consider, equipment that had less than 500 hours of service, so open it up for demos as well. And putting out those three options, it gives you a lot more opportunities for savings. On August 8th, we received two bids. One bid was from CAT, and the other was from John Deere. The low bid results are outlined in the report. The overall approved budget for the purchase in the 2019 budget was $270,000. It's a costly piece of equipment. Staff are recommending that the town accept a low bid for the John Deere Model 544L at Of course, we are also accepting that the trade-in cost for our current John Deere, our year 2000 model, is also accepted for a credit of $41,000. So in the end, when you factor the low bid costs with the trade-in credit, it puts us $26,000 below the forecasted budget. So our recommendation is to proceed with the purchase of the 2019 John Deere unit.
Okay. Questions? Nodding heads? Yes? Yes. Do you need a motion, Troy, for that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Can we do that today? September 3rd?
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yep.
Thank you, you're still up there, draft all-train vehicle bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go back to July 8th, town staff presented a report to committee regarding the OFATV, or the Ontario Federation of ATV Clubs' request for an urban ATV trail. At the conclusion of that meeting, council had asked staff to bring forward bylaws for consideration and discussion at a future meeting, which is consequently this evening. An outline of the trail route that has been requested by OFATV has been identified on, I'll call it a leg-by-leg basis in the body of the report, and a map of the route has also been identified as Attachment A. When staff started to draft bylaws for discussion, of course, the first thing we did was looked at the regulations. We also looked at what was happening with our neighbors that have ATV bylaws. We also looked at the governance model for the OVRT, so essentially where the ATVs are headed, just to make sure that whatever regulatory framework we set up was consistent for riders as they pass from boundary to boundary. When it comes to the roadway component of the bylaws that would have to be passed by the municipality, it's important to note that the municipality doesn't regulate the requirements of the driver, the equipment, the rules of the road, or exemptions. Those are largely identified under Ontario Regulation 31603. If you want to drive an ATV on a road, you have to be essentially, you have to be 16 years old, you have to have a driver's license, your equipment has to be insured, has to be registered, so there's lots of criteria to meet. Similarly, if an ATV is on a municipal roadway, if you're posted, speed is, in essence, 50 kilometers an hour, the machine must go at 20 kilometers an hour, and again, that's also a fixed requirement of the regulation. Where things can go different is municipalities can identify the months, or the months of the year, or the hours of the day that ATVs can pass on roads. And we looked at what the County Alannurk's doing, because the ATVs would have to cross a section of the County Alannurk in this trail. We also looked at United County of Leeds and Granville, Drummond North Elmsley and Montague Townships, and all four of those bodies have an 11 a, sorry, 11 p.m. to 4 a.m. curfew in their bylaws. So when it comes to ATVs and roads, that seems to be a similar rule that's being applied. We've, in effect, carried that forward in the draft bylaw you'll see in the package as Attachment B. We also need a separate bylaw that would authorize the execution of an agreement with respect to two separate properties, so a different bylaw requirement. In, within the report, you'll see some general terms and conditions that would be imposed on the host club, and it's important to note that the Rito Lakes ATV Club would be the host OFATV club for the trail system that goes through Smith Falls. You know, one of the discussions we had at the last meeting was, again, is this a one or two-year pilot? We've identified in the report for discussion. We've identified in the report for discussion, two-year, which was the request that was identified upfront. So in essence, all those terms and conditions, just the council understands how costs are assigned. Essentially, signage would have to be installed and maintained at the ATV club's cost. The gates would have to be moved on the CAT trail to the perimeter of the municipality. Again, another cost that would be incurred by the club. And the ongoing maintenance of the trail itself would also be borne by the club as well, all of which I've discussed these items with their club president. If council is satisfied with the draft bylaws and the general agreement terms, it would be recommended that we engage the public to get some initial feedback on this information. I still feel strongly that we should be hearing from the public on these routes. I think with the regulatory framework we have here, we have more of a story to tell in terms of the restrictions that would come into play. And that information could be brought forward to council with adoption of a bylaw. One of the questions that come up at the last council meeting was, how are we going to measure a pilot if a pilot does proceed? And staffer of the opinion that we would look at kind of three components. The first component would be municipal complaints. So we do have a tracking system where we could identify ATV-related complaints. Also, in partnership with the Smith Falls Police, I'm sure that could also be tracked there as well. Certainly a tracking of offenses and fines. We would be reporting any noncompliance in that regard, and we would also be reviewing the performance of the host club under the terms of the agreement. In other words, are the signs being maintained? Are the ruts or maintenance in the trail systems being taken care of in a timely fashion? So those are the three recommendations we have. So right now, that's the information we have to date for council. We're seeking direction on how to proceed this evening.
Thank you, Troy. Counselor Dwyer, hand your hand up.
Thanks. Thanks, Troy. I really appreciate that the bylaw doesn't overcomplicate things. It's very simple, and I like that it standardizes the way we deal with the use of ATVs with all of the other municipalities in the area, because these are such cross-jurisdictional policies that need to be considered. I guess I have a couple of questions, and the first being is that, obviously, you've had conversations with Mr. Gilfillan, who I noticed here. Have there been any other requested revisions to the bylaw by the ATV club? Everybody's happy with the policy that's currently drafted?
We've shared the context that we've introduced. There was some back and forth about the possibility of introducing seasons in terms of months. And because it's not found in any of the neighboring bylaws, again, we feel it's important to be consistent from one municipality or the other. When it comes to the seasons that the trail system is accepted, I think that's best managed on the lands that they must cross. So if you look at the Smith Falls Trail System that's appended, they have to enter, or sorry, they must enter into the CAT trail, which we operate, which would be the start of the trail system, and in terms of the exit point of the trail system in Smith Falls, that would be through our compost site. So I think through that agreement, we would be matching the monthly provisions that would exist on the OVRT. Again, for consistency, so if they can't cross those parcels those months, no need to speak to it in the roads.
Okay. I guess my position in reading this is that I don't really have any concerns with the bylaw. My preference, of course, is to do the public consultation, but I'd rather see us adopt the bylaw first and do the public consultation concurrently with an option to review at the end of the year, because that way we have a real experience with what the impacts of this would be, rather than simply speculating what sort of impacts ATV traffic could have in the community. I know we've already been receiving frequent emails from residents who have indicated that they have objections or support, and I'll be honest, I feel like it's a pretty 50-50 split, those supporting and those against it. But I don't know that until we actually have ATV traffic in town, we have any baseline to evaluate what the impact is. So with that, unless anybody else on council has concerns with the draft proposed bylaw that Troy has put together, I would suggest that we actually adopt it on September 3 and then immediately open consultation.
I've got a question for you. Why no? Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong. Have the provincial regs changed that allow ATVs on municipal roads unless the municipality says no?
That is a great question. In essence, the regulation hasn't been authored yet, from what I understand today, but we have structured the drafting of our bylaw to identify all roads are excluded except.
Yeah.
So we've authored our agreement to suit current regulation and proposed regulation. That way, we won't have to change it.
Okay. And so what did you have in mind for, I mean, Counselor Dwyer just suggested passing the bylaw and then monitor the public's, because I kind of agree with her that people don't, it's a little knee-jerk reaction, I think, in a way, and if they're on the road, then I suspect they'll see what it really is, rather than sort of thinking it's going to be terrible.
My only caution, and I think perhaps it falls on the club, is there's capital investments they need to make in signage installations. So if there's any second guessing of it later, there's been investments made by their club. That's my point that I want to get across.
Okay.
But that's their risk.
One more. In our neighbors, and I mean, I would look to maybe Carlton Place and Almont specifically because they're more a town built up there, and they have it, right? It goes through pieces of their town. When they pass their bylaw, did they do a preliminary public ed piece and then pass a bylaw? Do we know that?
Albeit they're similar, they're not. The scenario is they are on the linkage, but they are on rail beds. So they are not as, like, as an example, Almont, they're on the trail throughout, and that was contentious. In terms of Carlton Place, my understanding is there's roads crossed, they're not running down extensive lengths of road. So there's similarities and differences, and just caution, caution is.
Well, I'm thinking the same way as Counselor Dwyer. I'd like to hear from the rest of the committee. Counselor Allen?
I agree with you. I'm wondering if those expensive changes could just wait? Like, are they something that absolutely are necessary in order to move forward?
Mr. Chair, well, I mean, I think signage is certainly going to be essential on, for wayfinding, so that they stay on the roads they're to be on. As they enter the CAT trail, as an example, we want to make it clear where they can't go, you know, when they enter the trail system above the Bellamy Farm subdivision, we want them to go right and not go left. So there's got to be a certain amount of signage, but again, those would be risks to the club, and I just want to make sure if there's expenditures upfront that everyone's aware.
Counselor McKenna?
I'm interested proceeding. I think that there's no one with more of a vested interest than the trail riders and the association themselves. And if they get feedback in three months or six months that something's not working, I'm confident that they will do everything they can to rectify it if it's something. And if we have to tweak a bylaw versus, we're not talking about throwing it out, we're talking about an adjustment. And so I think going in this with goodwill, the associations, the users themselves want this to be a success, as do we. So I'm confident that we could proceed and maybe do some tweaking later on if need be.
Counselor Alfred?
One way or another, sooner or later, we're going to need a bylaw that regulates the ATVs. So I would be, I would go ahead with the bylaw and the two-year trial. We'll see what best measurements come out of that, and whether or not, if that trial is successful and it, the public feedback is not what, is not, it gives the, it gives a residence a chance to experience it. They have preconceptions going into this, some may, and this may, the trial period will allow them to actually see what the traffic looks like and what the participation by the ATV club is and their conduct. So I would support going ahead with the bylaw and the two-year trial. Write it out. Write it aside.
Counselor Dwyer?
Sorry, one last point, just to clarify. Can we concurrently pass a recommendation, maybe a recommendation or just staff direction, that provides confirmation that there's going to be public consultation that comes with this commencing when the bylaw gets passed, with a commitment to follow up to council within, say, 90 to 120 days, so that we can consider whether or not there has been impact?
Counselor Morris? CEO Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, yeah. I mean, our recommendation is to just to make sure there's some form of engagement. I think the addition that you've added is reporting back, so yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I think we have consensus, and that can come forward on September 3. Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Bellamy Farm Site Plan Report. I take it Clerk Costello's got this.
Thank you. I'm bringing this report forward on behalf of senior planner Carl Grenke this evening, so if there is something I can't answer, I will get you the answer before passage of the bylaw on September 3. So what I'm asking for this evening is approval for council to pass a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute three site plan control agreements with Parkview Homes being the properties in the Bellamy Farm subdivision. The concept and design is very similar to what was presented to council back in March, with the only difference being four unit blocks rather than three, and also that we will be looking to create three nearly identical agreements, one for each block. As was outlined in the report, there was a technical review done on the application through the Rito Valley Conservation Authority, who had no concerns, Public Works, as well as Planning Services. This was also discussed at the Planning Advisory Committee, who had no issues with the submission. The recommendation coming out of the report is for council to adopt a bylaw authorizing the site plan control agreement and looking for council's concurrence.
Questions? Great news. Another great development. Nodding heads, so that'll come forward on?
September 3.
September 3. Good. License agreement water lot for docks at Lower Reach. Director Mannhire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is essentially a housekeeping item. We're looking for a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute the agreement. We have the agreement from Parks Canada, and it covers one year of a lease on the waterfront to put the docks in at Lower Reach.
Okay. Nodding heads, we'll have that tonight.
Thank you.
Finally, Service Sustainability Review, round six. CEO Morris?
Not Counselor Morris, but CEO. Thank you. So this is an update, and for those that weren't on council the last term, this was one of the seven priorities of council, was to conduct Service Sustainability Review. We finished five rounds, we're on to the sixth. There are two more to come after this one, but what I can say is, this time around, we're having a very in-depth look at three services: water treatment, corporate administration, and parks and recreation, all important. Well, two of them are certainly visible. Corporate administration certainly important for support. So the teams are in place. We have a charter or a description of each area that we're going to be evaluating. That's well underway. You can see in the report, I won't go through it all, but we've listed the performance measures. The idea was to make sure that we're able to measure what we're doing today and compare it to where we want to be in the future. Some services aren't conducive to a performance measure, so we've looked at areas of concern instead. So for instance, corporate administration, it's difficult to have a measurement for something like human resources, but we can count the number of training opportunities, the number of new hires, and the number of coaching and mentoring sessions, those kinds of things. So less quantitative and more qualitative, I would say. So having said that, we have the teams in place, we are showing our comparators, we've had great cooperation from other municipalities, and in some cases, we lean on them at every round to go back. Arnhem Prior comes to mind, Carlton Place is another one. So we want to give a shout out to those communities that have provided their data for us. And it's a two-way street. We provide our reports back to them, because they can glean insights from our report. And then we have the teams. Again, the nature of this process, the principle really was that we want to put both management and frontline staff on the teams, because they are the people that know the services best. And so far in the process, we've had great success in finding real efficiencies or savings, or in some cases, we found that we were understaffed, planning being one of them, by law enforcement being another. So they're well underway. We expect to have final results and report back to committee in October.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counselor Dwyer?
I promise it's a fast one. Malcolm, will we be looking at modernization efforts in the clerk's office? I know I've spoken to Carrie and Nadine about that as well, but I noticed it wasn't one of the areas identified in the areas of service. Okay. Okay.
Certainly for payroll is something we need to.
Counselor Alfred?
Yeah, not, this wouldn't, for me, be about operations. This would be about procedural bylaws and modernizing and addressing some of the gaps in some of our older policies and procedures that I would like to see, namely petitions. There is no speaking in our procedural bylaw to petitions, that kind of update of those types of policy documents. I would like to see some of that, and that could be measured. I know you like the measuring, and you would be able to tell when, you could actually tell that was done. Checkmark.
CEO Morris?
Yeah, a great question and request, really, and I can tell you, it's not part of the service review, but it is on Director Costello's work plan for 2019, is to bring back a draft procedural bylaw. So we have a number of companion policy pieces to the service review, and that's one of them, so stay tuned.
Counselor McKenna?
Just a question on the admin and corporate services. Is the percentage of expenditure compared to the overall budget something that is maybe not, you know, like, sometimes you hear anywhere from 10 to 25, or 25% of a corporation's budget should be in corporate services. So does the municipalities of Ontario have any guidance, or is there any standardization? I'm thinking about, I think you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. I don't have an answer at this point, but I would reach back to the days we used to do performance measuring as a matter, of course, that we report to the province. That requirement has been diluted a little bit, but certainly we can have a look at that in the overall picture. The difficulty is that although municipalities, in the bigger picture, do the same thing functionally, sometimes they do it differently. So for instance, sometimes finance is part of corporate services, sometimes it isn't. Sometimes HR is part of corporate services, sometimes it isn't. Bylaw would be another one that would vary. So I'm just predicting perhaps some difficulty in aligning apples to apples, but we can measure the percentage of corporate services in today's budget compared to what it should be in the future. And I think that's really the benefit of performance measurement, is measuring against yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up, when we were at AMO last week, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference, the minister in charge of reducing red tape spoke, and I think municipalities were generally pleased to hear the reduction in the number of reports that the provinces... of reports that the province is asking for that are quite redundant. They take up a lot of time, they aren't adding value, and I can't recall the number, it's at least seventy-five right off the top, and there's another hundred and forty they're looking at. So it just shows the volume, the staff that have to push these reports up to the province, and sometimes no one's reading them or they aren't adding value. So that process, I hope will provide, uh, that staff time could be redirected to higher priority items.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all, uh, procedural bylaw and that sort of thing, red tape is important. I, I think the service sustainability is how do we provide service, uh, to the, to the, um, to the taxpayers in the most cost-effective way? And every time I think of that, I think of Director Dunlap's opus on line painting a few years ago, and, uh, I never knew we could save so much money on line painting, so it was, those that were here remember it well at the high school. So thanks for that, uh, report, and it's great to hear, uh, we're always on it, so. There. Um, we have no standing items, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Counsel Allen, Counsel Dwyer, we're adjourned for a couple, couple minutes while Carrie might have to do.
Yeah.
No minutes. Do I have a pee? [laughter] We've got a, a quick council meeting. It's a special meeting of council this evening. Uh, we have regrets from Mayor Pankow, I will be acting as acting mayor, and, uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, I have one announcement, uh, on behalf of the mayor, and it's a proclamation, Big Brothers Big Sisters Month, September two thousand and nineteen. Whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters of Lennar County is a professional and dedicated service organization, committed to matching children and youth with caring volunteer mentors. And whereas evidence-based research has shown that Big Brothers Big Sisters mentoring model contributes directly to an increased academic, academic development, better family and peer relationships, a substantially lower reliance on social assistance, reduced criminal behavior, and more trans, successful transition from school to work. And whereas the future of our Big Brothers Big Sisters Agency depends not only on its past impact, but also on the future impact of its little brothers and little sisters, and the continued commitment to its big brothers and big sisters. And whereas Big Brothers Big Sisters of Lennar County relies heavily on the strength and dedication of its volunteers, who through their commitment and support make a profound difference in the lives of children of our community. And whereas the agency's goal is to expand its recruitment drive in order to serve more children and youth in our community, now therefore, I, Jay Brennan, Acting Mayor of Smith Falls, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and nineteen as Big Brothers Big Sisters Month, and Wednesday, September eighteenth, as Big Brothers Big Sisters Day in our community. Businesses and residents are encouraged to paint the town purple on this day. I also encourage everyone to log on to the website for the agency at wwwbigbrothersbigsisterslennarca to learn more about the programs, services offered by this great community organization. And so we had Big Brothers and Big Sisters here at our previous Committee of Home meeting, and, uh, and Gal Logan spread, uh, their good word to us at that time as well. So, uh, I'll ask for any disclosure of monetary interest? Seeing none, we have no delegation, no? No, it's not on. Oh, I do have one. I'm going to declare on seven point three, uh, which is a, uh, a zoning bylaw on Pearl Street, and I declared that, uh, previously, uh, as it is very close to my home, so, uh, I'll hand that over to, uh, Counsel Allen, and at that time. Uh, any reports this evening? We'll forego the reports, given the hour. So the first bylaw is with Counsel Allen.
Yes, um, moved by myself and seconded by Councilor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six three, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls at its meeting held on the fifteenth day of July two thousand and nineteen be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls at its meeting held the fifteenth day of July two thousand and nineteen be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Um, well, this is a housekeeping item, we do this, uh, we're, we're obliged to do this every so often, so, uh, we're just taking, uh, this is just July fifteenth this time, so as we do.
Thank you. Third reading?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six three, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls at its meeting held on fifteenth day of July two thousand and nineteen be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six three, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Ca, Council of the Corporation of the Town of Smiths Falls at its meeting held on the fifteenth day of July two thousand and nineteen be now read a third time and finally passed, signed, sealed, and numbered one hundred and sixty-three, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Carrie. The next one is with Counsel McKenna.
Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Allen, bylaw number one zero zero six four dash two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada respecting a commercial water lot for the purposes of an inflatable floating structure be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel McKenna, seconded by Counsel Allen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty, Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada respecting a commercial water lot for the purpose of an inflatable floating structure be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Just that, uh, of course, Her Majesty and the, and the Government of Canada own the, uh, and are responsible for the, uh, Rito Canal, and we're, uh, our beautiful new inflatable, uh, rests in, in that waterfront, and any, uh, structure like that must be, uh, licensed, uh, under Canada, so we're pleased to have that done.
Thank you for that. Yep. Third reading.
Uh, moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Allen, uh, bylaw number one zero zero six four, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada respecting a commercial water lot for the purposes of an inflatable floating structure be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six four, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel McKenna, seconded by Counsel Allen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada respecting a commercial water lot for the purposes of an inflatable floating structure be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one hundred and sixty-four dash two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Carrie. And I'll let, uh, Counsel Allen will read the next bylaw.
Yes. Read this with Counsel Dwyer.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Allen. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by, uh, Counselor Dwyer, bylaw one zero zero six six dash two thousand and nineteen, being a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaws six oh eight oh ninety-four respecting lands known as part of lot two concession three, South Elmsley, Pearl Street, be received and read a first time and taken and read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Dwyer and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, bylaw one zero zero six six, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to amend a comprehensive zoning bylaw sixty eighty ninety-four respecting lands locally known as part of lot two concession three, South Elmsley, Pearl Street, be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. Any discussion, Counsel Dwyer?
Sure. So this is a zoning amendment application to recognize a nursing home with up to two hundred beds, uh, in the vicinity known as Pearl Street, doesn't have a current civic address of. It's a super exciting project, I believe it's coming back for site plan, uh, control in future stages, but this is to recognize that use on the intended land.
Yes, great good news, Troy.
Very good news story. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaws six oh eight oh ninety-four respecting lands known as part lot two concession three, South Elmsley being Pearl Street, be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six six dash two thousand and nineteen.
Moved by Counsel Dwyer and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, bylaw one zero zero six six, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaw sixty eighty ninety-four respecting lands locally known as part of lot two concession three, South Elmsley, Pearl Street, be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six six, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Thank you. Passed.
Counsel Dwyer?
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight sixty six eight dash two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be received and read a first time and taken and read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Dwyer, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight six six eight, two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Thank you. Uh, we've received a suggestion, uh, by Mr. Stan Suffol, to adopt the Citizen of the Year names list into our street naming policy, so that when new streets in Smiths Falls require names as part of a new plan of subdivision, we could draw off that list of reserved names, uh, to honor those who have been previously recognized as Citizen of the Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third reading.
Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw six eight six six eight dash two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six seven dash two thousand and nineteen.
Moved by Counsel Dwyer, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight six six eight, two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six seven, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Carrie. Counsel Allen?
Yes, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of the Parks Canada Agency, respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of the Parks Canada Agency respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Yes, um, we have a lovely new dock down in that area, uh, was used during the fishing, fishing derby with children, um, but because it sits on Parks Canada property, we have a license fee, I believe it's two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and so many cents, and, uh, that's what this is about.
Perfect. Third, third reading?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of Parks Canada Agency respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you. Passed.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight sixty six eight dash two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be received and read a first time and taken and read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Dwyer, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight six six eight, two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Thank you. Uh, we've received a suggestion, uh, by Mr. Stan Suffol, to adopt the Citizen of the Year names list into our street naming policy, so that when new streets in Smiths Falls require names as part of a new plan of subdivision, we could draw off that list of reserved names, uh, to honor those who have been previously recognized as Citizen of the Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third reading.
Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw six eight six six eight dash two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six seven dash two thousand and nineteen.
Moved by Counsel Dwyer, seconded by Counselor Dwyer, that a bylaw to amend bylaw eight six six eight, two thousand and fourteen, being a bylaw to adopt the street naming and numbering policy be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six seven, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Carrie. Counsel Allen?
Yes, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of the Parks Canada Agency, respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of the Parks Canada Agency respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? And discussion?
Yes, um, we have a lovely new dock down in that area, uh, was used during the fishing, fishing derby with children, um, but because it sits on Parks Canada property, we have a license fee, I believe it's two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and so many cents, and, uh, that's what this is about.
Perfect. Third, third reading?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor McKenna, bylaw one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of the Parks Canada Agency, respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counselor McKenna, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a license agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, as represented by the Minister of the Environment, for the purposes of Parks Canada Agency respecting water lot for docks at Lower Reef Park be read, signed, sealed, and numbered one zero zero six eight, two thousand and nineteen. All in favor? Carrie. And Counsel Dwyer?
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dwyer, bylaw ten thousand sixty-nine dash twenty nineteen, that a bylaw to authorize an exemption to the procedural bylaw seven eight five two dash two thousand and four be read, uh, be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Maguire, seconded by councillor Dwyer, that a bylaw to authorize an exemption from the procedural bylaw 7852-2004 be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? Discussion.
This is to move the August, or the September third meeting back to the arena so we can have an accessible audience. We're going to be talking about the modifications to the Beckwith Street Plan and it would be really nice, I don't know if it's possible, to get that committee terms of reference approved to get two things done, but that just came to mind, so I don't know if it's, the timeline's realistic. Third reading?
Yes, please.
So, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dwyer, that a bylaw to authorize an exemption to the procedural bylaw 7852-2004 be read, signed, sealed and numbered 10069-2019.
Moved by councillor Maguire, seconded by councillor Dwyer, that a bylaw to authorize an exemption to the procedural bylaw 7852-2004 be read, signed, sealed and numbered 10069-2019. All in favor? Carried. And the last bylaws with councillor McKenna.
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Alfred, bylaw number 10070-2019, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a funding agreement for the MTO Connecting Links program be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.
Thank you. Moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Alfred, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a funding agreement for the MTO Connecting Links program be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time. All in favor? End discussion.
This is, we were delighted to receive the Connecting Links funding that we had applied for through our staff and it was a key piece in our package of funding that we put together to revitalize our downtown, and so this just authorized the staff to proceed with executing the agreement.
Thank you for that. Third reading.
Yes, bylaw number 10070-2019, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a funding agreement for the MTO Connecting Links program be read, signed, sealed and numbered 10070-2019.
Thank you. Moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Alfred, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a funding agreement for the MTO Connecting Links program be read, signed, sealed and numbered 10070-2019. All in favor? Carried. So, we have a few motions and the first one is with councillor Dwyer.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Maguire, that council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls appoints Mayor Shaun Pankow to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan Advisory Committee for the 2019-2022 term of council.
Thank you for that. End discussion.
Yes, we are now required to have such a committee and Shaun has taken the proverbial bullet to sit on the committee.
We got tonight off, so that's good. Any other discussion? Okay. Moved by councillor Dwyer, seconded by councillor Maguire, that the council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls appoint Mayor Shaun Pankow to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Being Plan Advisory Committee for the 2019-2022 term of council. All in favor? Carried. And councillor McKenna?
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Alfred, that the council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls receive report 2019-097, results of an annual inspection of drinking water 2018-19 and 2019 as prepared by the manager of waste water and wastewater treatment.
Thank you. Excuse me. Moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Alfred, that the council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls receive report 2019-097, results of annual inspection of drinking water system 2018-2019 as prepared by the manager of water wastewater treatment. Discussion? I should ask that first.
Yeah, well, Mr Bartle presented that report to council at a previous committee of the whole meeting and I could be mistaken, but I think the outcome was that we were 100% compliant in all of the conditions that were assessed on, and so I know that council read the long report. It's a really key piece of validation to the community that are using our drinking water, that the municipality operates a safe and effective and fully authorized drinking water system.
Thank you for that. I've read the motion already, so all in favor? Carried. And finally councillor Alfred.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor McKenna, that council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls deem the section of the unopened municipally-owned Allen Street Road allowance situated immediately to the south of Marguerite Street as detailed in the sketch heretofore as surplus to the needs of the town of Smiths Falls. There is, there will be a sketch attached to it when the clerk gets it back.
End discussion.
As we, as we have seen prior to this over the last months and I think with previous council, when it has been identified that the land is no, that the town itself has no plans for that land, we have declared them surplus and that is, this is another occasion of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Moved by councillor Alfred, seconded by councillor McKenna, that the council of the corporation of the town of Smiths Falls deem the section of the unopened municipality, municipally-owned Allen Street Road allowance situated immediately to the south of Marguerite Street as detailed in the sketch heretofore to, hereeto as surplus to the needs of the town of Smiths Falls. All in favor? Carried. And councillor Maguire's got the most important one.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Maguire's in announcements. Any? Councillor Allen?
I just have a really quick one. Train Fest took place this past weekend and I was speaking to my fellow board members and apparently it was the most successful so far, had the largest number of attendees, but also most successfully financially too, so there'll be more of a report later, but I guess it was a great, great weekend. I was at a wedding, so missed it, but I heard great things about it.
Councillor Alfred.
We've had so much to celebrate lately, it's hard to keep track of it all, but I do want to echo a comment I made on the weekend, that Tweed and the shindig that we, several of us attended, I really don't know, every year it gets better. This year, they added a Ferris wheel, which was a huge hit, who knew? The music was wonderful, the energy there is wonderful and the staff and volunteers from Tweed that put that on, they do not disappoint. This is their fourth year and I will be attending the fifth, I'm sure. I do want to thank the Rita Ferry Regatta for inviting me and councillor Dwyer to participate in the regatta cardboard boat. It was seriously like paddling a brick.
That's generous.
And we only didn't get very far off before it began to sink. We had to abandon the boat and literally swim in. We did manage to do some damage to another boat on our way back, which was fully intentional. We were the only female team and I think we acquitted ourselves admirably. I did have to take a long nap after that swim back because apparently the course was much longer this year than it's been in previous years. I also want to thank, and I don't think we've mentioned this because we've been on a bit of a break, but James Perkins and the people who organized and executed beautifully our pride parade, I think it was bigger and better than ever and I sincerely thank them for that work. I know that councillor McKenna probably has an announcement that he wants to make as well, and I just have two more. Bravo, Brooke, on your performance on the weekend and also I want to, I've extended my thanks to our chief of police and I know most people in our community are aware of it, but the recent activity by our police and the OPP in a joint venture to make our community safer and put some bad guys away, I know that this community and I, I as well appreciate the work that went into that and it was a lot more, it's a bit like an iceberg. We just saw the tip of what they, they did to accomplish all that, so thanks for them, thanks to them as well. I think you have one that you wanted to, it's a bit of paternity.
Well, no, I think I mentioned it the last, I guess maybe not, but of course, Smiths Falls owner Bailey Anderson won a bronze medal in the Pan Am Games. She has a line now towards her eyes set on the Olympics, which will be this spring, I think April, the national championships where they will actually select the Olympic team to go over. She's a stiff competition, but we wish her well. And secondly, I know we've been all, as your representative on the local public health unit, we've been keeping track of the province's plans to redefine the boundaries and to go from 35 public health departments down to 10. The minister is listening, Minister Elliot, she announced at the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference last week that she has sought the services of a special advisor to review the boundary discussion to go out and do extensive consultation. So, we've not heard the last, they were pushing the boundary issue fairly hard in the spring, summer, and it looks like they want to take a step back and through the special advisor and listen to municipalities, public health departments and others around what actually would work best for Ontario. So, stay tuned for more on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Dwyer.
Thank you. Unlike councillor Alfred, I had blacked out our recent voyage in the Bay of Rita Ferry. I did not realize that it was socially acceptable to cheat openly. Tay Valley brought their two most well-built teenage summer students to paddle a giant unicorn. It was impressive. I don't believe they won. I believe it was Reeve Fournier who won in a tived and insulated boat. So, let that be a lesson, Smiths Falls, we need to up our game, but it was, it was a lot of fun. So, and thank you councillor Alfred for agreeing to sit in at the 11th hour on that one.
You're nominated to do it next year.
Oh, thanks, Jay. I do have two meaningful announcements.
I have watched the playback video and I really think you need to work on your paddling skills.
Oh, them sun fighting words there, Miss Alfred.
Okay.
Okay. I do have two actual legit announcements. The first is an announcement from, they're both actually real announcements. The Harvest Dinner celebrating the 30th anniversary of Reel is coming up. Mark your calendars. It's October the 19th. I will be buying a table, so if anybody is interested in dinner, please see me. The other one is a more timely event and it's in honor of recognizing the beautiful monarch butterfly garden that was built at Reel as their 30th anniversary project. If you have not seen it, please go down and visit it. It's stunning. Its grand opening will be Saturday, September 14th from 1 until 3 p.m. Please, please, please go check it out because it is really a work of art.
Thank you for those.
No, I just closed my phone. October 19th.
Okay. You're on.
Thank you. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dwyer, that this council adjourn its proceedings at 7:30 p.m. and stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting of council.
Moved by councillor Dwyer, seconded by councillor Dwyer, that this council adjourn its proceedings at 7:30 p.m. and stand so adjourned until the next duly called meeting of council. All in favor? Carried.
Too much information.
I take Chris as my standard. Take Chris.
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Dwyer, bylaw 10069-2019, that a bylaw to authorize execution of a funding agreement for the MTO Connecting Links program be received and read a first time and taken as read a second time.